Corbin.
Here.
Mr. Pavoni.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. McIrvin.
Here.
Ms. Switchy.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Jason. First item on the agenda this evening are two very special proclamations.
Okay, the first proclamation, Judy Cliburn Day, whereas City of Renton wishes to honor State Representative Judy Cliburn, a leading light in transportation arena, and whereas State Representative Judy Cliburn brought the strategic savvy of a chess player and the practical knowledge of a local government elected official with her to Olympia, whereas Judy's beginnings in public service started at Mercer Island City Council member and mayor, serving on the council from 1989 through 2002, and acting as mayor from 1990 through 1993, during which time she led the Growth Management Act visioning process, and whereas Judy then moved to the state level, was elected to the House in 2002, and became Chair of the Transportation Committee in 2007, and whereas Judy went on to build a lasting legacy and billions of dollars worth of transportation infrastructure in her role as Chair, as a doer, as a listener, and as a bipartisan actor who got things done with grace, class, humility, respect for all others, and unyielding determination, and whereas Judy exercised a high dose of strong will and grit for 2015, when a three-year odyssey of work culminated in the passage of connecting Washington, a sixteen-year, sixteen-billion-dollar investment in transportation, the largest infrastructure investment package in the history of the Evergreen State, and whereas Judy built bridges of cross-the-isle cooperation for the passage of this package, which provided unprecedented funding for state corridors, new funding for local governments, new tools for transportation benefit districts, increases for transit and ferries, investment in fish passage facilities, and a complete streets program to incentivize pedestrian and bike-friendly infrastructure, and whereas while being Transportation Chair occupied a lion's share of Judy's time, she never forgot to support quality-of-life investments in Renton, the Sunset Area Transformation, the replacement of the Riverview Park Pedestrian Bridge, and the 1.5 million in funding for the Family First Community Center. Now therefore, I Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim June 18th, 2018, to be Judy Cliburn Day in the City of Renton, and ask all citizens to recognize her as one of Renton's cherished and adopted daughters, and to celebrate her as someone who cares deeply about Renton, cities throughout her district, and communities throughout her state, and witness whereof I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 18th day of June 2018, signed Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corbin, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any opposition? The ayes have it. We're very, very honored, Judy, to have you here this evening, and before I bring this down to you, I wanted to introduce some members that are here to help celebrate your wonderful career in the legislature. The 41st District, which covers the northern part, northeastern part of Renton, covers a lot of the east side too, and we have been blessed to have the representation that we've had from the 41st District. Here with us this evening is Senator Lisa Wallman. You want to please stand up. Lisa, welcome. We have Representative Tonassan. We have former Senator Fred Jarrett way in the back, who's now Deputy King County Executive. And we also have former state legislator and longtime Renton supporter Marcy Maxwell. So, I'm going to bring this up and then let you say a few words.
Well, thank you so much. I really am touched by the words. These are very personal words, and usually proclamations can not portray all that you said in here, so I really appreciate how you characterized my way of dealing with all the years that I spent, and I just want to thank you for being the city that you are. I came from local government, and I know when you get it right, and this is a city that I said a few words before we came in here, that this is a city that actually works together with schools and businesses to make it happen, and so I am glad that I can carry that same kind of flavor and could take it to the legislature in your behalf. I think we did get a lot of things done, and I'm ready to leave, and I'm not going to be sorry, but I will miss some of this kind of thing, because working with you guys has been so wonderful, and thank you so much for your kind words.
I encourage our current and former representatives, Fred, come on up for a picture. Yes. Thank you for being here this evening. Okay, we have another very special proclamation.
Okay, proclamation, Juneteenth, 2018, whereas we acknowledge the notice of freedom given to the slaves of the state of Texas on June 19th, 1865, and whereas we give honor and respect on this day to the suffering of our ancestors, and we acknowledge the evils of slavery and its aftermath, and whereas on this celebration, we think about the moment in 1888, when 300 black men from Virginia, North Carolina, and Kentucky were determined to escape the terrorism of the post-Civil War South, as they boarded trains for the Washington Territory and settled in King County mining camps, and whereas the story and outspokenness of James Shepperson, an educated black man who settled in Roslin, Washington in 1888, inspired many other blacks to flee the South at great risk and pursue new opportunities in Washington State as miners, and whereas we acknowledge African-American freedom, contributions, and achievements within this community, past and present, and whereas during the Juneteenth event, we appreciate the African-American experience and celebrate the inclusion of all races, ethnicities, nationalities, and whereas we commit to working together toward equity for all and expanding economic, educational, and career opportunities for all of those in our community. Now therefore, I Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2018, to be Juneteenth, 2018, in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this celebration, and witness whereof I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 18th day of June 2018, signed Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move this proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corbin, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I want to thank the Renton African-American Pastors Group that have worked very hard with the city to assist us in promoting events like Juneteenth, and we've come a long ways, and we have a long way still to go, but it's been really great. I really appreciate all the work that went into this effort, and it's my pleasure to present this to Dr. Linda Smith, who's been an advocate for this community and for the black community for a long time, and works with us on a practically full-time basis.
I would like to invite our two co-chairs, Mr. Mayor, to come up and join me in the acceptance of this proclamation, Reverend Larnier and Reverend Herron.
So, on behalf of the Renton African-American Pastors Group and the City of Renton, we're really delighted to accept this proclamation tonight. We appreciate just the acknowledgement and the celebration of the contributions that we have made to this great community and continues to make. We continue to strive to bring about equality and justice for all, and what we do, it impacts not only us, but it impacts other community. So our goal tonight, as we move forward, is to stay focused on issues of justice and creating equality for all, as we continue to live and celebrate this great community. So thank you for this proclamation tonight, and your support in helping us to continue to do that great work that lies before us.
Craig.
And I do have a few people from the community that came. I'd like to at least invite them to stand.
Oh, please, yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is administrative report. Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I have three items for you this evening. First is just a reminder that Juneteenth celebration continues tomorrow evening, Tuesday, June 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Carco Theater. They will close the celebration with a Juneteenth concert. On June 13th, the King County Project Evaluation Committee recommended a total of $6.7 million in grant funds to the City of Renton for the following transportation projects: four and a half million for the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements, Phase 4A, 1.2 million for the South Second Street Conversion to Two-Way Street Traffic, and lastly, 1 million for the Southwest 43rd Street Preservation Project. The recommended grant funding still needs to be approved by the Transportation Policy Board, and their meeting will be on June 20th. And lastly, this July, as part of the Summer Safety Campaign, Nextdoor will recognize law enforcement partners who have gone above and beyond. Nextdoor put together a list of the thirty most appreciated and engaging public safety officials, those whose Nextdoor posts have received the most thanks and replies from members in the last year. Sandra Havlick, a community program coordinator for the Renton Police Department, has been named a Nextdoor Neighborhood Champion, and Sandra is one of just thirty officers across the country being honored in this way. Throughout the week of July 16th, Nextdoor will feature Sandra and the Renton Police Department on their social media channels and blog. That's it.
Good, thank you, Bob. Next is audience comments. We have two people sign up to address the council. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. First is Shannon Richards.
Hey. I know some of you guys. So the reason I'm standing up here today is to discuss the changes in the Henry Moses Aquatic Center session times. Mainly, the session that starts at 2:00 and ends at 6:00. The session used to be at 4:00 to 7:30. That's kind of a big deal. To some people, this might sound trivial, but to my family and friends, it is a very big deal, which will result in not being able to even go to Henry Moses Aquatic Center. My son Lorenzo, say hi, and I have been season pass holders for six seasons. He has grown up here in Renton and at Henry Moses Aquatic Center. Everyone knows him and loves him. Lorenzo has special needs, and along with Down Syndrome, he also has sensory issues. Henry Moses Aquatic Center has become our family summer tradition. He feels very comfortable, he feels very safe, and we never ever have had any issues with any kind of bullies or anything when we were there. We feel very, it's like our second home during the summer. And as a parent of a child with special needs, this is really important to us and my family, and it's very far and few in between where we can find a community that welcomes us as Henry Moses. Now, here's the thing. In the past, we get there, because I'm a working parent, we get there in between 4:00 and 4:30, and we have three and a half hours of swim time. With the change of the hours, that cuts it down to an hour and a half. That's if I can leave my job at the time that I'm supposed to, but I am a manager there, and sometimes that doesn't happen. Of course, I'm not the only family in Renton that this is affected by. Any family that works, any working parents, this will affect. While doing all the research, it has appeared to me that the working families were never taken into consideration. These new hours literally cuts working parents completely out of the community pool, Monday through Thursday, which is half of the time that it's open. I was told these hours are set in stone for the 2018 season, and my question is, where was the communication earlier in the season? It would have been really great if, since season pass holders are a big part of this Henry Moses, it would have been great to get an email prior to the season of the opening, and we didn't get any type of communication. I am speaking for all the working parents in the Renton community that no longer have access to the community pool because of their work schedule. Here's how it breaks down for me and my family. The old way, we averaged fifty days, yes, me and Lorenzo were at Henry Moses for fifty days out of the summer, at about three hours a day, or three hours a session. That's 150 hours where we were at Henry Moses. The new way, the new hours, averaging the same fifty days, at one hour and five, one and a half hours of session, that's only 75 hours that we will now be able to go to the Renton community pool. It literally cuts our time in half. I didn't have this in here, but it also is the same cost. So now, which I never ever batted an eye from that, because I felt we really, really, we got it there. Please take all of this into consideration. I'm asking for our community, I'm asking for our community to change these sessions, so all working parents who have the, who want to, can join and enjoy the Henry Moses Aquatic Center in 2018. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thanks for being here, Lorenzo.
Counsel, Mayor, if may I?
Yes, Ms. Perez.
I want to apologize in advance, because these changes came to the Community Service Committee, and I have to be honest with you, I didn't foresee this, and I'm really sorry about it. And perhaps, Mayor, I don't know, I heard that this is written in stone, but if we can see some way that we can accommodate. I did used to work in downtown Seattle. I know that I could never commute and make it back to Six at Renton. So anyway, I'm just trying to look for possible solutions for working families.
Yeah, we're sensitive to that, and I'll talk to staff about it, but any change is going to impact somebody on one end or the other, so we do want to evaluate what that is, but we'll have a discussion about that.
Thank you.
Next is Craig Kepler.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. I know that some of you are probably getting tired of seeing me. So thank you very much for your time this evening. One of the issues being considered by council is the multifamily tax exemption program that the VF405 program project has requested, and we know that there is further review, committee review, going on at this point in time, but my purpose in being here is to lend my support, our support, for the 80% AMI limitation and the 12-year exemption. This, the project history goes back a long time. Back in 2016, we started reviewing the economics of the project, and at that point in time, we were fully aware of very slim margin in this project relative to the rents and the costs that were involved, and nevertheless, we continued on our planning process. To this date, we have probably invested in the arena of half a million dollars in engineering and consultant time. So we filed our preliminary PUD application in April 2017. We received that approval of the PUD in December of 2017. At the same time we filed our PUD, we also filed a request for the multifamily tax exemption with 20% of the units at 80% of the AMI. And so that was May of 2017, and here we are a year down the road, and I'm hoping we can bring this to resolution. So, if I'm repetitive here, I apologize for that, but I wanted to reiterate how Washington State views the MFTE program, and there are two issues with Washington State, and they're clearly identified in the RCW. That is, that it is to increase the opportunities for new multifamily housing development, as well as providing some affordable units, and the affordability issue is addressed in the Washington State Code as 80% of the AMI. I want you to all, to all know that those housing units that would be allocated to the affordable component are exactly the same type and cost of units that the market rate units would be. There's no difference whatsoever. In addition, those units must be spread throughout your vertical tower, so we can't locate them on the first level, for example. They have to be equally spread out through the entire project. So when we made our request, we could have easily gone to a request for only an eight-year exemption, or only a 10-year exemption, in which case we would have had no requirement to provide affordable units. We felt it was important that we give something back to the city, and we did that with the 12-year request, which includes a requirement of 20% affordable units. And I think that that was, the purpose behind that was twofold. Number one, it was giving something back to the city, and it increased the economic feasibility of this project. The cost of this project is approaching $57 million at this point in time. When we started out looking at this project, that cost was probably $47 or $48 million. Construction costs have been skyrocketing through the roof. Rents have been increasing, but only modestly so, and so this compression of feasibility is happening to this project at this point in time. So I stand here before you and say, you know, one of the reasons that we requested the exemption was for feasibility. I'm going to leave you with a couple of points here. I know that at the committee level, there was a recommendation for 20% of those units at 60% of the area median income. What happens? And this, there was a schedule that I delivered to the Planning and Development Committee probably in May. The result of including that 60% limitation is that many of the people that the city initially identified as being part of the multifamily tax exemption would include teachers, law enforcement people, fire people, healthcare workers. Healthcare is becoming a big, big employment.
Sorry, Craig, you got to really wrap this up.
Okay. At 60% AMI, none of those people qualify for the affordable units in the VF405 project. They make too much money. At 80%, those people now qualify for affordable units. The other part is, I received some new information very recently, on Friday as a matter of fact, in discussions with another individual, a city council member in Bellevue. It's apparent to me that there is no, there may be no loss of tax revenue to the city, that when the county assessor assesses the tax rolls, the pool of money that comes from improvement value is divided amongst the entire municipality. So there is no net loss of revenue to the city.
Okay.
I thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, I know this issue is scheduled for a Planning and Development Committee.
That's correct.
And the council have an opportunity at that point in time to discuss the merits of this, and of course, you'll understand when, during that meeting, this area is not eligible for this tax exemption, but could be included if you chose to expand the area. And we have a strong difference of opinion in terms of what the tax impact will be to not only the City of Renton, but the Renton School District, Renton Fire Authority, and all other taxing agencies. So we'll be able to provide you with all the data and information you need, so you can make a decision on the basis of that fact. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, we have two items for council consideration. Are there any items that a council member would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
Can we pull item B?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move council concur in the consent agenda minus item B.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corbin, that council concur with one item on the consent agenda, minus item B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is, item B is the request from the Community Services Department to have the approval of an interval agreement with King County Conservation District to accept $10,000 in grant funds to support the farmer's market. This is a topic that we routinely get every year, and you know, like you said last week, I love to accept money. So with that, I move that the council concur in the recommendation of the Community Services Department.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that council concur with item B of the consent agenda. Any discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Corbin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a Transportation Committee report to present.
Okay, Transportation Committee Committee Report. Amendment number 10 to Boeing Lease Agreement, LAG 10-001. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute amendment number 10 to the Boeing Lease Agreement, LAG 10-001. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council concur in the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corbin, second by Mr. Person, that council concur in the Transportation Aviation Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pavoni.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. McIrvin.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Switchy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee has one committee report.
Utilities Committee Committee Report. Fourth Amendment to Temporary Easement for Surface Water Drainage Overflow in Agreement with Segal Properties LLC. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute the Fourth Amendment to Temporary Easement for Surface Water Drainage Overflow in Agreement with Segal Properties LLC, which will renew the city's temporary easement for five property. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Witche.
I move that council concur with the recommendation of the Utilities Committee, committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Witche, second by Mr. McIrvin, that council concur with the Utilities Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. For councils, in case you don't recall, this is the large pit near the, the shops and owned by Segal, and so we've been, they've been very helpful to us in terms of storm waters, so. Okay, Mr. Person. Finished business?
No unfinished business.
Okay, moving on to legislation, we have one ordinance this evening.
Hey, this ordinance is regarding the, clarifying the impoundment redemption, impound code. An ordinance to the city of Renton, Washington, amending chapter 10-5 of the Renton Municipal Code, clarifying impoundment and redemption of vehicle regulations, designating the Renton Municipal Court as the post-impoundment hearing venue, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be adopted as read. This requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin.
Aye.
Ms. Witche.
Aye.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it. Thanks, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, June 25th, at 5:30 p.m., committee whole will be meeting in the conference antenor. We have three items on the agenda, Washington State Patrol Forensics, Economic Development, Downtown Revitalization Update, and Sunset Multi-Service Center, Career and Development Center Grant. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corman.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, and Mr. McIrvin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just need to announce that the Planning and Development Committee will be meeting on Thursday, June 21st, at 5:15 p.m. in the council conference room. We have four items on the agenda. Title IV, Development Regulations, Doc. 13, City Center Community Plan Advisory Board Appointment, Multifamily Property Tax Exemptions, and finally, emerging issues in CED. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Witche.
No new business, Mr. Mayor, but I think Mr. Pavoni might have one under June 25th.
Oh. I'll wait for it to come around.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one issue, topic. I got an email from Chief Ed, Ed Van Bailey, requesting that he be authorized to hire a lateral police officer at the Step D grade. This is Liberty Billingsley, she would be coming from Mississippi, I believe, and is a well-experienced officer, and they want to have this approved before she comes to the state of Washington so she knows that she's going to get about the same pay she's making now. So with that, I would move that the council authorize the compensant Liberty Billingsley as a lateral police officer at Step D.
Second.
Yeah, it's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman, that council approve the Step D for a lateral police officer. Any questions, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And then you have a committee report or committee announcement?
Oh, yeah, I guess I better announce my committee. The Finance Committee will meet next Monday, June 25th, at 5:00 p.m. in the council conference room. Three topics, interlocal agreement, oops, that we've taken care of, there's two topics now. Vouchers and emerging issues and revenue streams.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Under new business, I actually do have one announcement, and that is the Public Safety Committee that was scheduled for June 21st is canceled.
Okay.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the council meeting recessed into executive session for approximately 30 minutes to discuss labor negotiations, but no official action to be taken, and the council meeting be adjourned when the executive session is adjourned.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that council adjourn into executive session for approximately 30 minutes. In regards to labor negotiations, no action will be taken, and the meeting will be adjourned following the executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.